Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our board meeting. We just got out of a closed session, so we're starting a little later today, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Buddy, if you are out and about, be careful. Additions, deletions? Joe?
Yes.
I'm asked to delete action item number three, which is the hiring of a new police officer.
Support.
At this time, we didn't feel it was...did you want me going in or?
No. I mean, not if you don't have to.
No, that's fine. You looked at me like I ran your dog over. Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
We're good, then.
We're good. Any questions or comments on it?
Well, I think it was just they weren't ready for the motion.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's...yes.
All right. With that, we have a motion to delete action item number three, hiring a police officer. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That is deleted. Any others?
I would like to make a request to go first on the trustee report, assuming no objections from the other trustees.
You don't...that doesn't have to be added. I'll just do that, as I told you I would.
Okay, sure.
So, any other...any other additions, deletions? Seeing none, a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any nays? No? Okay, so we have our amended agenda. Public comment? Brian, do you have any?
I have none.
Okay, and we don't have...well, we do, but we don't have any public that are going to speak tonight. All right, moving right along, consent agenda. David?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve consent agenda 23-099, which consists of the following: minutes of the January 8th, 2024 regular meeting, check registers dated through January 12th, Bear with me a minute, because I think we're him.
Approval. You were on the approval number three.
I'm sorry. Approval to process and distribute payments through February 2nd, 2024, 2024 Board of Review Income and Asset Threshold Guidelines, and the 2024 March Board of Review Mail-in Appeals for Groseal Residents.
Any questions on the consent? Hearing none. We have a motion to approve consent agenda 23-099, which consists of the minutes of the January 8th, 2024 regular meeting, check register dated through January 12th, 2024, approval to process and distribute payments through February 2nd, 2024, the 2024 Board of Review Income and Asset Threshold Guidelines, and the 2024 March Board of Review Mail-in Appeals for Groseal Residents. I will have a roll call on this, because the last two are resolutions. Joe?
Yes.
Jamison?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Uda?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And Kyle?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Consent agenda passes. Thank you. We get...which brings us to our action items. And our first action item is...grab it. First action item is in relationship to our looking into the purchase of the bridge, the toll bridge. We have a motion that the Groseal Township Board of Trustees hereby approves and accepts a proposal from H&amp;H for professional bridge engineering services for the assessment of the Groseal Toll Bridge. What this is, as you all know, we had interviews of two engineering companies to do the assessment for the potential purchase of the bridge, and H&amp;H...I had H&amp;H on here because of some of the feedback that I got from people, and H&amp;H was my choice. I thought they were the most thorough, and I really think this is something we want to be thorough about. So, that's why I have that before you, but one way or another, we'll walk away tonight with an engineering company. So, that...you know, everybody knows the background, but comments from the board? Uda?
I guess I just want to jump in here. I agree with you. H&amp;H came in very focused, very prepared, repeatedly noted every nook and cranny, which resonated with me. Their lead engineer seemed very focused and was able to speak extemporaneously, quite effectively, on the nature of the work that we were leading...we were wanting them to do. I also really appreciated the fact that they left no doubt to us that they would say if this was a no-go, and I think what sealed the deal for me in the end, after the second interview, was the probably 10-inch-thick results deliverable binder that H&amp;H presented to us as the deliverable for a prior or a different bridge inspection. And when I addressed the issue of deliverables with the other company, I was just not getting a feeling like we were going to get that kind of specific and detailed documentation that we could actually nail down, use, in particular with future things that we might need to do. So, I really feel like they were worthy of their expected fee, and I strongly support this motion to hire H&amp;H.
Before I go to other comments, I'm just...I'm thinking it's a conversation that Derek and I had earlier today, and we do want to...and I was going to hold off until people expressed their thoughts on the different companies, but I think it's probably more appropriate to put this up front here, because it is...it is an important factor, although I think what we...the company is very important that we hire, and the thoroughness of what they do is really the most important, but obviously, cost is another factor, and it's...we know what the difference is between the two companies that was in their bid, but our finances is what we looked into, and the money that we have, and where it'll come from. So, Derek, if you could just fill us in on that.
Yeah, so I had the finance director take a look at where we're at year-to-date within our budget, and obviously, the budget's not complete, the fiscal year's not complete until the end of March, and even after that, we start having...we still have funds that are expended that we haven't booked yet. So, based upon her best guess, though, we probably can bring, at this point, about $130,000 to this project without impacting fund balance. So, at this point. So, I guess, in summary, anything over $130,000, those funds would have to come from fund balance. So, as you review this, obviously, if we have a $330,000 expenditure, it's 200 that would hit fund balance. If it's a $230,000 expenditure, it's 100,000 that would hit fund balance. So, this would put us...this project would put us into a position of having to use fund balance, obviously, depending upon the total cost, you know, it could be more, it could be less.
Would it, if we go ahead, and we...and that's going to be...that's going to be either one of these.
Correct.
It's going to be either one of them, so...but if we go, you know, obviously, this project isn't going to be completed this fiscal year, it's going to go over to the next. So, are we looking at just what we would have to fund this year, or are we looking at the total? We're not, obviously, paying them the total upfront, we're going to be paid summon.
Yeah, I have to check with the finance director, because depending on the auditors, when they review the books and when that expenditure took place, sometimes this depends upon when the cost is actually incurred, sometimes it depends upon when the cost is authorized. So, you're correct in your thinking, we may only have half this project completed within this fiscal year, so only half that cost would be in this fiscal year. That could be a possibility where you have a, you know...
Which we then could afford it.
You would budget for it next fiscal year, whatever remaining expenditures are still out there. Yes.
Supervisor?
Yes.
Might I just then add, because it's something that Derek and I did briefly speak about before we came in the room, I had the same reservation. I'm not known for spending more money when I can get away with spending less, but I felt like the thoroughness, and then Derek meant...put the words into my mouth, really, that I was missing, is that the thoroughness of H&amp;H and their report might actually, in the long term, save us some money, because they'll be able to point out things in much deeper detail than I think...again, I have no proof. I just had the confidence that they would be able to give us a much more detailed assessment, which might give us a better position when it comes to negotiating and making an offer on the...
Coming up with...yeah, exactly. And that's...and we'll say, that's...I mean, that's what we're going on. How did they...we don't know how either of them is going to do. They're big firms, they're going to do a good job, but, yeah, the confidence level and the thoroughness that I thought we would get from the one, I think...and again, it is worth that money if you're going to get that, so...
So, I might be a little bit of an outlier here, but I would vote against H&amp;H and for M&amp;M, and I definitely...H&amp;H had a better presentation, right? It was the lead engineer who was speaking, obviously, is very confident and could speak extemporaneously, but I don't really...I don't know that that exactly translates to engineering work, right? We're paying these guys to be engineers, not speechwriters, and for 100 grand, considering the reputation of M&amp;M and the fact that they're both using the same subcontractors, Fishbeck and Great Lakes Engineering Group, I'm comfortable going with the lower bidder on this one, especially considering that if we used M&amp;M, we could potentially avoid affecting the fund balance at all if it's split between both fiscal years, so that's my position.
Okay, very good. Anybody else?
I believe you get what you pay for. In this case, H&amp;H starts with an investigation or a review they did in 2004. They already are hitting the ground running, because they can take a look at that 2004 work that they did in trying to determine what has been done in terms of maintenance and repairs, and use that as a beginning of a timeline, and then coming forward. M&amp;M did a general, as I recall the conversation, a general inspection pursuant to state statute, which I believe is the lowest possible review that will allow the state to still allow the bridge to stay open. We were then presented with information on an intermediate determination, if you will, or investigation, and then H&amp;H actually did the deeper investigation into that in 2004, which I believe gives them a better insight as to where the bridge was, where the bridge has gone, and perhaps even extrapolate as to how things have been going with maintenance, repairs, and some of the other work that's gone. On that, I am very concerned trying to get to the bottom of why we had a weight reduction to 7,500 pounds, and I think that...and I'm...as Joe always said, we're not engineers. None of us are engineers up here, but I firmly believe in the prologue, and that is knowing where you're coming from, and I think H&amp;H already has that in place. That's why I'm very interested in H&amp;H, and I think they have a step up on everybody else in that regard. Do I like spending $100,000? No, I don't. On the other hand, sometimes when government goes into the lowest bidder, you get what you pay for, and I'm convinced, based on the presentation and the prior examination, that this warrants $100,000 difference. I feel more comfortable with that. Not to say that Jamison is wrong, but I do believe that that prior inspection, that's very important to me, and I think that's going to be very telling as well.
All right. Thank you.
I'll say something. This one's a tough one for me. You know, I think we get numbers up here, I don't know if everyone always understands them, but the tough one for me is that these aren't budgeted numbers, so it is going to be hard for us to come up with this money, either place we hire. I agree with what most folks said about H&amp;H. I think what I liked most about them was them saying, "I will be the first to tell you not to buy this bridge." That is a huge thing, you know? M&amp;M did not...I think we kind of tried to lead them that way, and they seemed more towards, like, "How do we get to get you to buy this bridge?" is what it felt like. But I will say, on M&amp;M's side, they brought the actual contractors that H&amp;H was going to farm out to, so in that sense, I liked what M&amp;M brought, you know? So, I'm struggling with this one, honestly. I'm back and forth on it. To understand, again, what you said about the fund balance, Derek, it sounds like there's a way to do this without going into deficit spending, but basically, our fund balance is going to go down, right?
Yeah, we won't go into deficit spending. We won't go into any deficit spending, it's just where's the money going to come from, and it may...it sounds...I believe we'll probably be able to spread it over two fiscal years, so there really won't be a deficit, and we won't have to worry about coming up with it. But... Joe, you're all set? David, you're the only one we haven't heard from, unless you're all set?
I'm good.
You're good? Okay. Because we do have different views on this, I'm going to do this on a roll call. So, we have a motion before us, the Groseal Township Board of Trustees hereby approve and accept a proposal from H&amp;H for professional bridge engineering services for the assessment of the Groseal Toll Bridge. Joe?
Aye.
All right. Jamison?
Nay.
Okay. David?
Aye.
Uda?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And Kyle?
Nay.
And I vote aye. So, H&amp;H, more importantly, we have a bridge engineer to make an assessment, and we can keep moving forward on that project. Thank you. David, I believe you're action item number two.
Yeah, make sure I read this right. Okay. Hey, I'd like to make a motion, based upon the recommendation of the Groseal Airport Commerce Park Manager, Groseal Township Board of Trustees hereby approves the processing of a pre-award bulletin for option number two, phase one, with Molnar Roofing, with revised project scope of work for Island Athletics Center. The total amount awarded for this revised quote will be $129,081.
Second. Thank you. Thank you.
The...
What is this...yeah, what is this for, David?
The Airport and Commerce Park Commission has been discussing this for several months, anyway. The Island Athletics building needs attention. We had originally gone out for bid, and the bids were coming in, in the $400,000 to $500,000 range, which obviously is beyond the payment level that we'd be inclined to look at seriously. We went back to Molnar Roofing, and in their original...we determined that a partial phase of the original...or one phase of the original proposal that they provided to the airport would suffice with the necessary repairs that are required to maintain this...continue to maintain this building. We've had representatives of the source of the material, they've done design testing, product testing, and a minor change in the way the flat roof meets the barrel roof. And we believe, and Molnar believes, that that one phase that's...will be sufficient to solve the leakage problem at that, so it can continue to operate.
Well...anything else?
Yeah, no, that's it.
Well, yeah, I have some questions, because I'm going on 12 years of looking at this roof, and talking about this roof, and putting Band-Aids on this roof, because the airport never wanted to replace and do the whole roof, and it continues to come up every couple years with something like this, where they're doing another Band-Aid on it. So, you're saying that they believe...there's some leakage now, this is going to take care of the leakage?
Right.
But does it take care of their roof problem?
Yes, because the roof problem, which is the leakage on the roof, is where the barrel hits the flat roof. And in the past, everything that's been done is the flat roof was being placed, and is placed, going up onto the barrel roof.
On the outside of the barrel roof.
Outside of the barrel roof. Now, they're going to peel back the barrel roof six to eight feet, and the flat roof will go up underneath the barrel roof.
So, there can't be any water running into a crack.
No leakage, and it's coming down, and the runoff will be on the outside of that joining location where the flat hits the barrel, and...but the material's been tested, the design has been tested with field testing, if you will, and everybody is convinced that this will solve the problem.
My other question is, in the backup material that was giving...given to us is not for just phase...this option two, phase one, it's part of it, the actual proposal is for the whole roof. Do we have a proposal, and why wasn't it given to us?
The only thing we have is the proposal, the part of the overall, because this was...
That's what I'm saying. This...there is...in this document, it talks about doing the whole roof, it doesn't talk about just doing this.
Yeah.
So, we don't have a proposal that just...
That just says that. It's included in the original proposal.
So, I'm confused, because I read it the other way, that neither of these options addresses the entire roof. In option one, cost methodology, they say, "If we do this, we still have three remaining phases at $127,000, $360,000 each. If we do option two, we may have a smaller amount for this initial repair, but the entire roof would then be $410,000."
For the balance.
For the balance. So, option one actually seems like it's long-term, it will cover the whole roof, and it will be more economical than option two.
Well, yeah, option one is $539,000. Option two is about the same, $157,000 plus the $410,000. So, I mean, the...but my point being that there is...we don't have anything saying, "We'll do just this phase one of option two for $129,000." This was part of bidding the whole job for $500,000, and I just want to make sure that if we...that we go to them, and they say...and we say, "We're only doing this," that they're not going to say, "Well, that $129,000 turns into $150,000," because that's all, you know, that type of thing.
No.
Well, it also says that option two would not be warrantable, so not under warranty until the entire roof is done.
Correct.
So, if you're only doing that section, that you don't have a warranty. That's how I'm reading this. I don't know if that's...
Yeah, and I mean, what was the airport's reaction to that?
That, I don't know.
I might be able to chime in.
All right.
So, the original bid was for the replacement of the entire roof, and then, obviously, when that came in right around, I think it was like $700,000, they started looking at a variety of different options. So, they started looking at different adhesion methods, some mechanical versus some hot welding, and so there were options with that. Then, when that came in right around a half a million dollars, and they looked at other options, the one that's being presented by them tonight, that has been handled by reins. They have worked through, you know, a contract and an agreement with regards to the...
Just for this one?
Correct.
Why weren't we presented with that?
I'm not sure why that version wasn't presented to you guys this evening. To speak to the warranty issue, the manufacturer, really, of the product, really, is the warranting group. It's not necessarily the installer. The installer will warrant their labor, but the issue really is the manufacturer's warranty, that's where the value is, because installers come and go, not to say that this installer would, but the manufacturer will not install a product unless the entire product is installed based upon their...what they're recommending. a product unless the entire product is installed based upon their, what their recommended method is, which would be replacing the whole entire roof. So, you're not getting a manufacturer's warranty on this, but more than likely, you would get some sort of warranty out of the installer for a period of time. I can't speak to why that portion wasn't part of the, what was submitted to you this evening.
Yeah, but they, yeah, they did talk about warranty. As you say, they wouldn't, this wouldn't be warranted.
I have a few, few questions. So, I think I know the answer to this, but financial impact, it doesn't say what fund. I assume this is exclusively airport funds, correct?
Airport fund balance.
Okay. So, the totality of the work, depending on which option, is either about $410,000 or $550,000 bucks. The, so this came up very early, sorry.
Well, the totality of what we're voting on tonight is only to authorize the $129,000.
Sure, but it doesn't make a lot of, I mean, yeah, I understand we're authorizing $129,000, but it doesn't make us, a lot of sense for us to not eventually cover the other three parts of the roof, right? Otherwise, we're just throwing good money after bad. So, the other question I have is, and I think this was the first meeting this board had was concerning this building, and one of our concerns was that we don't know what the state of the whole structure is. So are we, are we buying components for this structure when we're gonna find out a year from now that the, I don't know, the C chassis class struts are in, you know, a complete state of disrepair? So I suppose it's the airport's recommendation and it's the airport's fund and they are a semi-autonomous entity, but I would like to know that they're, they're at least doing their due diligence and making sure we're not gonna be fixing the roof on a building that's structurally compromised in other ways.
I assure you, they've done the due diligence. And I'll tell you, the airport doesn't spend money foolishly. They're careful with their dollars. And if, if, if we didn't believe the commission, Janelle, that this was gonna increase the life of that building, they wouldn't have done it.
Okay. Along that line, why did they originally then look at doing the whole roof?
Well, that's, the first, you know, the first, okay, the roof's leaking, we gotta replace the roof. I mean, and I think, you know, people would do that with their own home, too. Okay, I got some water leak, I need a new, I need a new roof. When the numbers came in at $700,000, $500,000, it wasn't gonna happen. It's just way too much money for that particular building. But I know that Janelle with, with, with Rains and the installer, Molnar, they truly believe that this will solve the leakage problem and, because they've identified where the leaks were coming in. And it was not through the barrel, even though that's not the ideal kind of roof to have on a functioning building. But this will enable that, that building to continue to operate.
Other, other comments, questions?
I too, Jamison. I remember that we had discussions early on in this, in the term of this board about what the condition was. Was there mold? What's the wood issue? That building is probably 80 years old or more. I would like to know what the life expectancy of the building is. Putting a half million dollars into that is not an easy step. This is not a reflection on either the Airport Commerce Park Commission or the manager. I, those people do a great job.
Nobody's spending half a million dollars.
I'm saying to do the job right and to have the, the roof, the roof replaced and that. We're not going to do a half a job now and then 10 years down the road and not have consequences to that. I would like to see if we could come back with a better understanding, more information as to what the life expectancy is, what this is gonna do. Will Island Athletics plan on staying longer then? Because I don't want to be putting, as Jamison said, that kind of money into a building and then finding that you've got some real structural problems, although I remember the engineer looking at it and saying, we didn't have those yet. I'd like to know what's going on in three years since then. I'd like to know what the probable lifetime expectancy of that building is. And I'd also look at, like to look at what some of the other options are. And again, I have a huge amount of respect for the airport manager, Airport Commerce Park Commission, but when I look at a barrel roof and trying to heat that and all of the problems that go with that, I don't want to see economics dictate that, okay, Island Athletics is here for another three years and then they find that they can't heat it, as an example, which is what killed the youth center that was on Meridian Road, was the heat bill. I don't want to see the same thing here. I'm not opposed to the roof work. I just want to know what that buys us and where this building is going. And if it's gonna be going in a positive direction for another 30 or 40 years, then, yeah, I'm willing to support it. But I think as this board is required to do is our own due diligence to find out where that takes us. And again, I think that the Commerce Park Commission and the airport manager are well-positioned to tell us that. But those are questions that we have, and I'd like to have this brought up at the next meeting where we can have some more, more definition.
They have no problem.
Not meaning any disrespect to you either, Dave.
No, no.
Okay.
Are you saying table this?
I would like to table it to the next meeting.
Till next meeting.
Any, any opposition to that or any other comments?
Not necessarily, but just to add some more context from my understanding, I was aware, I wasn't on the board, obviously, when this came up, but I was aware very deeply of that discussion because I was on the rec commission and that rec was gonna take it at one point. But I do want to say since then, obviously, there's now a rent-paying tenant there that gives services to folks, pays more in rent than the previous tenant. And I think that my understanding, I don't have the numbers, Dave, in front of me, but my understanding of the benefit of this is it allows the cost to be spread over time where, you know, that, that rent could cover the costs of this over that time. If we had to spend the half a million dollars today, then, then it wouldn't, it'd be a lot harder to do that, you know what I mean?
Well, I can tell you right now, if, if our only option was to spend $500,000 or $700,000 if it be ripped down.
Yeah, that, that, no, and that was the discussion, public discussion in Airport Commerce. I had residents like worried about that because they were going to Island Athletics and happy about it. And, and this seems like an elegant solution to spread that cost over time where the rent could theoretically cover that. I'm, you know, it sounds like the board wants to table it. I, I don't, I don't have those numbers in front of me to tell you what I'm saying right now, so I understand that. But I will say, obviously, that's more time the tenants dealing with the leaky roof that is paying rent to the township. I'd hope that they'd be amenable to being okay with that, but that is the only concern I'd have with tabling it, but I'm okay with the board doing that.
I have, I have no objection with bringing it back.
Yeah.
Yeah, if I could just say one thing.
Sure.
When I was reading through this, I understand what they're doing and I did get a little confused about the total numbers. And then the, let me back up a second. If the roof's leaking, I'm in agreement, they gotta get it fixed. If the contractor believes they can fix that leak, because nobody wants water coming in that place. It's a danger to people on the courts, it's, or wherever it's coming through and going down. And we know that leaks manifest sometimes 50 feet away and cause the problem where the leak is. So this is supposed to help and I have no problem with that. So, the reason I would support this is I think that that roof has to get fixed. If this is the way they believe is the best way to fix it and to put the money into it. But when we say table it, are we saying vote on it and come back with the more information? Or table it with more information, then we vote on it?
Vote on it next time is the table.
In two weeks, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, Dave, do you know what that would do with the leak? I mean, or when they would even start, or is this?
How would that work? Because you were, you said you were okay with tabling it, but is that gonna hurt?
I am not aware that...
That's gonna be a problem?
Three years would start like tomorrow or anything like that. Certainly, given the weather, I don't think we'd start ripping any part of that off.
Is that, is, that, it's obviously leaking. Do you know where it's leaking? Is it leaking onto a cord? Is it, is it a danger to the people?
I do not know the answer to that.
Okay, all right.
It is. I know it's going, there's a cord, it's part of the facility that can't be used when it leaks.
The back, the south, the southeast portion of the building is probably where it's worst, the worst area.
As manager, do you know when they project to start, like if approved tonight, when would, when would they plan on starting the work?
I don't recall it. The conversations I had with the manager, she had mentioned that without them going on the barrel of the roof, it's less of a concern, the, the current weather. Going over the barrel of the roof during adverse weather conditions, there's, there's safety concerns. But with the area that they're working at right now, I think they can do it during the, during the winter time. So, you know, they don't need to delay to the spring or anything like that to do this work.
Was there, but was there any, like, we gotta get this passed and we have to get this done now?
I mean, I know that they...
I mean, obviously, you want to get the, the leak fixed.
Yeah, I mean, this has been, this conversation's been going on with the Airport Commerce Park Commission for the past four months, right? If not, probably four months.
That takes care of the...
Yeah, so, I mean...
Well, I, I, I just think maybe some of us here are, are left wishing that they had presented us with a little bit more information. But if it is a dire situation where a facility can't be used fully and it's leaking, I mean, that was not part of this presentation tonight. So, but, so I, I mean, I, I would like to table it to get more information, but if, if it's important that they, let's say they can get started, you know, this week on fixing it, then, you know, we should probably go ahead.
Yeah.
That's where I was at. I mean, you just said it the way...
Yeah, like I mentioned, they've...
You said it better than me.
They've been working on this for a long time, just trying to figure out the best option. And to Kyle's point, you know, I think they've looked at ROI and what makes sense and what they can spend and still break even with the facility and, and the longevity of the roof, the center barrel area, because it has more of a pitch, is in as, in poor condition as the other areas that are currently leaking. So, I think they've looked at a lot of different options over a period of time. I'm sure an additional two or three weeks is not ideal, but I don't think it's gonna cause any significant problems, from my understanding of things. So, I don't know if that answers your question.
It probably just would have been very helpful to know that they're, you know, essentially in the proposal here that we're talking about a currently leaking roof. So, I guess I, I could see myself supporting this, but I also don't want to be throwing good money after bad.
And the fact that they've been looking at it for months, it shows that...
Yeah, yeah.
It would have come to us much sooner at that. So, so, Brian, just quick, okay, we have, we have a motion. Can we just vote to table it?
Yes, we will need, yes, you'll need a first, a second, and then a majority vote.
Okay, do I have a motion to table?
Move to table?
Second.
Second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that's tabled. That'll be on our next, next, next agenda.
I would, I would encourage whoever's out there listening to come back with some ideas as to longevity, where we're going with this, with this building and what's realistic. Not suggesting that it's going to need to be torn down tomorrow or 10 years or 20 years from now, but I think that is a big part of the equation and what is the long-term expectancy for this building. And I know we had the engineers that did a, I don't know how depth, how in-depth of a study they did three years ago.
It wasn't a real in-depth study. They, you know, weren't tasked with an in, a real in-depth study.
So I would be very interested in getting some ideas, projections as to where this building is, is going. And so we know what to do.
Because you're, you're absolutely right, because even at $130,000, that's a substantial amount of money. Okay. With that, our action item number three was deleted, which brings us to our public comment. Jade, I'll give you one last shot if you wish to say anything. Okay, and Brian, do you have anything?
I do now have one. All right.
Please give it to me.
Margaret Shelton, Bellevue. I find it truly disturbing that we are spending what sounded like $100,000 more for this engineering firm when we are in need of more millage money. We do not have extra. We need to budget and if it means reviewing, if the lesser company can support our needs, we need to do that. Secondly, if we have a lawsuit of significant costs pending, that needs to be acknowledged and considered. The citizens of G.I. do not have endless funds. Let's be frugal with our money. Let's see a plan. We can do better. That's all I have.
Thank you. With that, clerk's report.
Thank you. I'm just going to keep my portion of this very short. The Community Recreation Commission meets here at 6 o'clock on the first Thursday of every month, so our next meeting will be on Thursday, February 1st. Please join us. Brian, will you give us an update? I noticed you've got a lot of signage up. A lot of things have arrived in the mail and on social media. Very exciting with this primary coming up.
Yes. So obviously, we have the presidential primary on February 27th, 2024. And I just want to go over, you know, how we can vote. You know, we now have three options for voting in this primary. You can vote absentee. All registered voters have the option to vote absentee ballot. Ballots are now available in the clerk's office. They became available last Thursday. To get a ballot, all you need to do is submit an application requesting a ballot. On that application, you'll just need to sign date, check which type of ballot you want, Republican, Democrat, or just the local millage. Return that to the clerk's office where we will issue your ballot. Ballots must be returned to us by 8:00 p.m. on Election Day. You can return ballots either in the mail, in person, drop it in our drop box in the circle. You can check to, on the top of that application, to be put on the permanent, permanent ballot list, which will get you automatically mailed a ballot for every future election. Let's see. Method two, you have early voting. Early voting, all registered voters have the option to vote during the nine-day early voting period for all state and federal elections. Our early voting site is here at Groseal Township. That will start February 17th, that's a Saturday, and that will go nine straight days, ending on Sunday, February 25th. So the township will be open for early voting for two Saturdays and two Sundays during that period. Also be open for President's Day on the 19th. Early voting will be from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on all nine days. And then, obviously, the third option, which is the standard, Election Day voting. All registered voters have the option to vote at their assigned precinct on Election Day. Polls are open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. We now have three precincts. Precinct one, located at the Presbyterian Church on Horse Mill. Precinct two, located at St. James Episcopal Church on East River Road. And precinct three, located at Centennial Farm on Third Street. And that's all I have.
That's it for the clerk's office.
Thank you. David?
Thank you. For the month of December, Groseal Township had a total of $22,034,000 in investments, and these accounts generated a total of $69,900, with an average interest rate of 4.04%. And the December investment report can be reviewed on the Treasurer's section at groseal.com. To date, we have collected approximately 58% of the total winter tax roll. Reminder that winter tax bills are due February 14th. And winter tax deferments are still available. Eligible residents can apply for an extension of the winter tax due date from February 14th to April 30th of 2024. And forms for those are also available online at groseal.com. And that concludes my report. Oh, no, no. There was no DPS meeting in January, and the next meeting will be on February 13th at 7:00 in the boardroom. And the next Airport Commerce Park Commission had been scheduled for February 19th. Because it's President's Day, the meeting has been moved to February 20th, and that will, that will be in the first floor conference room. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to the trustee reports, we're gonna start with Kyle.
Thank you. I sit on the planning commission, which met last week on Wednesday. A lot, a lot of things, well, there was two things that came up. The biggest one to bring up to folks is a upcoming...
The biggest one to, to bring up to folks is a upcoming lot split. It's not on the agenda tonight, but West Shore is splitting off part of its lot to a developer. And the development is not a part of the lot split, but I did wanna let the, or, sorry, the development is not a part of the lot split, but I did wanna let the board know that folks from Jewel Colony, which is a historic, you know, housing development on our island, did show up at that meeting, very concerned about this lot split. It was, I think, a sixth in favor, I voted in favor of the lot split, one against John Rathell. For me, the development is something that would come later through some kind of zoning request, which would require letting the neighbors know and getting more public input. But I did wanna let the board know that there is some controversy around this lot split coming forward, and I encourage you to watch the meeting or do your due diligence before you vote on it. And I did encourage all those folks from Jewel Colony to submit public comments here if they are against the lot split, because they were concerned that they weren't being informed, et cetera. I know, at least from my time on the Planning Commission, that this development's been around for a while and different things that have been coming up. But, you know, before us, that day was just a lot split, which, you know, at least under the criteria that I had, where I thought it was easier to, to vote in favor of, and I think actually simplify things, because there's West Shore and the developer, and I don't know if they're communicating very well. If the lot split happens, it goes straight to the developer, and I'm hoping the developer can communicate a little bit better instead of having to go through West Shore to, to figure things out. So, anyway, I did wanna let the board know about that. A second thing is, I've, I've informed the board, but I wanna inform the public too. I'm still pushing on the calcium hydroxide leak coming out of the former McClaus site, the north side on the Riverview side. It's going into the McGlagan Creek, we know, but what I've been concerned about is it's been going into the public road as well. There was agreement from many agencies to put signs up to warn the public about this substance that's showing up along the train tracks there. It's kind of a white milky substance, and its pH is very high. If you step in it and don't clean it off, it could burn your skin. And, and so, Wayne County DPS, I guess, showed up at one point and, and didn't see that white, white milky substance there, decided not to put signs up. That was, I think, informed in, that was in the, I wanna say, November of last year when that, that came up. But I, I went out there, I wanna say, two weeks ago, saw the substance again, reported it again, and so, action was done to try to get the signs up again, but it somehow fell on Riverview to do this, which I don't fully understand still. And Riverview, what they did is put up no trespassing signs, which doesn't make clear that, hey, if you step in some white milky substance here, that, to be careful. So, it is actually on me, they're asking, you know, one thing they asked me is like, what signs would be good? So, I'm actually trying to go back and figure out if Wayne County still has the signs they made and if they can give those to Riverview. But anyways, it's a little bit of a, of a mess involving more agencies than I thought were going to be involved in this, but wanna let the board know about that. And then, finally, police millage, this is why I asked to go first tonight. I'm gonna be very careful about what I say tonight. I have had some allegations from some residents, that some of the materials that have gone out have ventured into campaigning and not informational. I did wanna let everyone know that all the, all the police millage stuff that has gone out has gone through our lawyer to, to make sure that it's informational. And I wanna be very careful tonight to be informational myself. A thing that I'm seeing from residents is overall worries about their tax bills. And I know that the Assessors Office and others in Township are, are, are dealing with that. My understanding of tax bills that have gone up, a big reason for it is just the inflationary aspect. I think a lot of folks know this, but our Headley, the Headley Amendment generally keeps tax rates down, but because of inflation, it was allowed to go up basically the full 5% that Headley allows this, this last tax year, and I think everyone really felt that in the, in the winter time. So, that's a lot of the feelings I'm seeing from, from folks out there. I'm seeing another thing, there's folks that actually pay their tax bill directly, which I know there's some folks, but also folks that have mortgages, so their mortgage companies are, are collecting their taxes for them, and sometimes they miscalculate and get behind on the taxes, and so, their mortgage payment jumps up in a big way. But anyway, that's the pain that I'm seeing out there, that people are feeling. And, and I wanna say, something that's been a part of this police millage as long as I've been on the board has been ways to levy taxes differently going into the next year. I, I was thinking of adding that as a discussion item tonight, and I heard very clearly from the Township Manager and others that we don't have enough information yet to talk about how, how to levy things differently coming into the next year. But I just wanna say, me, as a board member, I'm gonna be looking at that very, very closely, depending on what the outcome of the millage is, overall tax burden and what, what influence we have over that. To be clear, I, I don't wanna pass the buck here, but we collect the taxes, but we only cover a, really, a third of, of what overall taxes people pay. Township is one-third, schools is another, county's another. But I, I care very deeply about our, our role in that and, and do wanna look at, at how we, how we ease the tax burden for, for residents going into the next year, regardless of what happens with the millage. So, that's what I wanna say here, and, and I know other board members feel this, I've spoken to different folks about this, but I just, I, I welcome other board members to talk about it if they'd like. If not, of course, they don't have to, but just, I just wanna say that's something that I've been, I've been looking at very closely through this millage. Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle, Joe.
Good evening, I sit on the Police Commission, they meet third Tuesday of each month. And first off, I just wanna thank Kyle, there's a couple of things that we've been working on together. First, with the police issues, you should've gotten your flyer in the mail. If there's any questions on anything that you have with that, please contact Chief Carmack at the Police Department, he'd be happy to answer any questions that anyone has regarding what the money's going to be used for. And then also, something else came in, I wanna make sure this is clear. The, I was contacted, the monies that were used for the flyer, that was budgeted money, it has to come from budgeted money, it can't come from forfeiture. It was first thought to be that it was gonna be used from the forfeiture fund, and it was not. That can be confirmed with Teresa here or Chief Carmack. And actually, I got a few questions on it. I wanted just to make sure, to ease whose ever mind is out there, that we're using funds correctly at the Police Department. And, and that is, I mean, that's not negotiable, that's the way it works. So, the next thing is, I sit on the Citizens Action Group from McClaus Steel. And Kyle, again, I thank you for that, we've been working on getting signs put up. Carl, I'm sorry, Carl, Kyle, and actually Greg Carmerson, we were very helpful in contacting the correct agencies for this. And Kyle is right, that it is back, and we're trying to get the county, just because they showed up once and it wasn't there, doesn't mean it's not there. All we're trying to do is just make the people aware, due to a, a minor injury that occurred there, and that's how they found it last year. So, Kyle, once again, thank you for that, thank you for the explanation on the levying of taxes, and I would be happy to, to discuss this in a discussion item at the board meeting of the possibility of next year. Each year, and I believe it's right before, and Derek, correct me if I'm wrong, isn't it right before the yearly meeting, like in March, that we figure out how much we're gonna levy from each millage? Is that correct?
Yeah, a little bit earlier in the, like, in the fall, fall timeframe.
No, but I mean, isn't there a vote that comes out?
Your levy, the millages that you're levering and stuff will come out usually, I believe, in the fall.
Oh, we vote on it in the fall?
Correct.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we vote on it before the, the March 31st ending.
It has to be voted on before December 1st.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll have a discussion on the budget before our, before our March meetings. And, and I should say, we'll have a study session on our, on our budget. And then, that'll be followed by a vote on the budget in March.
So, you'll, you'll vote on levies in the fall, near the fall time, but you're right. I mean, as we go through the budget, we'll talk about millage amounts and revenue projections based upon anticipated millage levies.
Okay.
So, I think that's probably what you're thinking.
Yeah, that's, yes, thank you. Well, I would definitely be in favor of at least talking about it at the board level, so. But, thank you, Kyle, you explained that, and thank you for the explanation on the McClaus Steel issues. And that is it for me tonight.
Thank you, Jill, Jamison.
All right, good evening, I sit on the Zoning Board of Appeals, which will meet tomorrow, and then the Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission. BPAC actually met last week, Thursday. Productive meeting, mostly talked about, you know, what we've accomplished over the previous year, goals for next year, and then, you know, kinda how to get there, a little bit of housekeeping. On the points that my fellow trustees have made, I, I don't know what to say about the Wayne County showing up, not seeing a chemical on the ground and then deciding not to do anything about it, other than that, that's silly. It's, it's kind of like, I wasn't there, didn't know what to do, like, so, I guess that's, that's just silly. And then, as far as the tax burden goes, like, I'm, I'm feeling the tax burden too. I'm, I'm a little bit of a tax hawk to begin with. And, I mean, I, we all, everybody sitting here pays the same tax bill, you know, so. Our job is to present the voters with, you know, a good product for them to make a decision on. So, you know, ultimately, we're, we're not raising anybody's taxes. But there are things we can probably do to lower people's taxes, and I think that's what Kyle was talking about, so. So, I'm for that and appreciative that Kyle brought it up. So, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Jamison, Carl.
I have the pleasure of sitting on the Greenways Open Space Committee. We did not meet earlier in the month because of illness. We're going to be meeting on Wednesday, January 24th, 7:00 in this room. Same situation with respect to the Fire Commission. Illness forced us to push that meeting back to the end of the month. We're looking at Monday, January 29th at 6:00 in this meeting, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir, Derek.
Just two real quick minor items tonight. A update on the Meridian Road Bridge went out last Friday. So, if you are part of Code Red, you would've got a notification. If you're not, sign up or go on Groseal's website, because that information is posted there. Just to restate, what that had said was that there are very few minor items that are remaining for that bridge's completion, primarily safety-related items, guardrails, fencing, ditching, shoulder work that has to be completed. They are working on a variety of those items this week. It is my hope that we'll be able to provide another update this Friday about where they're at with those minor items, but we are getting, getting close with regards to that opening. And soon as we have an exact date when that's gonna happen, we'll be sure to put that out to the residents. The managers for various departments will be starting to work on their budgets here fairly shortly. Information is being generated within our Finance Department that gives the detail that our managers need to start on their budget, so that's ongoing. As soon as we have a schedule of meetings, we will be passing along those to the board members, so they are aware of where we're at with our schedule. Just as a reminder, our budget has to be approved by the end of March, so we will have a series of meetings with regards to those budgets, as well as our commissions will be talking about them. And there'll be meetings internally with the Finance Director and various members of the board and the entire board as we go through that process. So, as soon as we have some dates put together, we'll inform you of those so that you know where we stand with regards to those conversations. So, with that, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, thank you, Derek.
Thank you.
My report, the DDA meeting this Thursday here in this room at 6:30. Also, that evening, there is a meeting at the West, I believe it's Westfield Community Center in Trenton, next to the Trenton Library. Debbie Dingell and EPA officials will be there to discuss superfund sites in the Down River area, environmental issues in the Down River area. I have the DDA meeting to go to unfortunate, not unfortunate because it's DDA, but can't be in two places at once, and I hope someone will, in fact, from the board, will be going there. I think it, it'd be good for us to have some representation there and know what's going on. They'll be, they'll be dealing with that. As far as, as far as taxes, I do wanna be fair. You know, the Headley was the full 5%, but it, it's not Groseal's taxes. There was also a new school tax that made up a big portion of the increase. So, when you, I know when people look at their taxes, since we send the bill out, it's our taxes, but there are other, there's always the county and the schools that also come into play on that, so. And along those lines, I know, and this is for the last two millages, which was the DPS millages and even the fire millage. One thing that we have been taking into consideration in looking as, as to that new millage and when that new millage gets assessed, is the fact that we will have millages falling off in the near future. And we built that in so that, in fact, although there's an increase or a bump this year, in a couple of years, you're actually gonna be less than what you're paying now. And we will, and in, in saying that, it's the same thing that we will look at in, when we do our budget or when we look at, and when we look at any new millage. And, and that goes, you know, the police millage was talked about, and I know there's been a lot of discussion out there on that, but looking at that, it was the same thing. We're looking at, at this millage with the fact that millages are gonna be dropping off, and again, that your overall, overall millage will be less in the next couple of years than it is today or with that. So, keep those in mind. And we, when we do need to get out and educate people on that type of thing, it's, obviously, it's up to them to make their decision for or against anything. And just one other thing, we met with the Senior Alliance and were presented with some medical ID bracelets. At our next meeting, I'm gonna, I'd like to make a little presentation on that. We will be giving away 50 of those bracelets to our senior citizens. You have to be 60 years old to, to get them. I'm just working out now where we're gonna, how we're gonna pass those out. It'll probably be in Township Hall here, but we'll have more on that at the next meeting. But they really are a good idea. They have a lot of information that even if you're just going to your doctor for a checkup and they ask you for your laundry list of medications that you're on, you can scan this bracelet and pop up the list, so it's, it's pretty neat. And we'll have that next meeting, and that's all I have.
Jim, I'm sorry, can you please repeat the time and date of that environment meeting?
Yes, it's, it's at the, it's at the Westfield Community Center at 6:00 Thursday.
Okay, I have just one question on that, there was one that I saw, I got an email that there was one in, that's in. There was another city, though.
Yeah, and the, the initial one that you got, that was the wrong city.
Oh.
It was, and they made a correction, it's it.
That's why I'm asking, I wanted to make sure.
So, yeah, yeah, I, I was given.
This is Trenton, then, Westfield's on it?
Yes, it is, it's right next to the, it's right next to the library there.
That's why I got, okay, I got an email from Riverview, okay.
Yep.
Thanks.
Yep.
I'm good.
Okay, with that.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.